I'll lead pledge tonight?
Certainly. Tell me when, right now?
We'll do that. No, hang on.
Tell me when.
As we call to order.
Right.
Oh, Chair, it is 7:00. I need you to apply.
Okay, know what that means? It's time. Mr. Mayor, are you ready?
Yes, we are. Just have to make sure I admit it to everybody.
Good job. Okay. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 11, 2023. If we could have roll call, please.
All right. Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Needham?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
I'm also trying to connect.
Pardon me?
Continue?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Commissioner Minkoff?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Will not be here this evening.
And Chair Stephenson?
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, and Commissioner Minkoff will be leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? They'll say no. And anyone online wishing to speak this evening? Not seeing any. Okay, with that, we'll move into the next agenda item. And is this a work session on Halsey? Are we doing a hearing?
Work session.
Okay. Since this is a work session, I'll wait for the hearing procedure for the next case, okay? And we'll just go ahead and go right into that. Mr. Mayor?
All right. I will share my screen. I have a presentation here. There we are.
Are we Cascadia first?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So first up is the presentation for the work session for the Main Streets on Halsey. And presenting is...
Jimin.
Jimin Brown Cascadia.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me here tonight. So my name is Jimin Kimel. I'm with Cascadia Partners, a partner with the firm. You may recall our firm from the work on the Confluence plan. I'd like to recall to Town Center, finding some brief Alex Joyce from our firm attended some of those meetings in Cascadia. And so I was asked to come here tonight to give you an overview of and have a refresher on the Main Streets on Halsey work that have been done over the last few years. Our firm was involved in that. And to, I think, reopen the conversation on whether or not you'd like to move forward with any type of the types of code, zoning code changes or zoning incentives, things of that sort that were explored in the past project. And if whether the opportunity to kind of link those up to the Town Center Plan or recent projects that have been adopted by the city. So I've got a presentation. Let me just take 10 to 15 minutes and then have some, I think, questions that we want to get from you, help staff decide how to move forward. I should also, I think, still, here's a little result from this from the City as well. And I think it's related to helping to make sure we close up with the grant that Metro provided for the the Main Streets on Halsey project. That's a bit of that background. So I should also mention that several of our staff worked also on the original Main Streets on Halsey Economic Action Plan, which was finalized in 2017. And I myself am doing Cascadia Partners and worked on what was titled the Site Readiness and Code Update Project, which was jointly implemented by, as you know, Troutdale, but also Wood Village and Fairview. And so I've worked on that project from 2019 to 2021 or so. So have some of the background of other, what the other cities have kinds of...
It wasn't, and the houses next to it weren't right. It just kind of felt a little bit like, yeah.
So I'd also say have a bit of background on what the other cities have done so far related to implementing some of the ideas from the Main Streets on Halsey Action Plan. So in terms of organization, the presentation today, bit on what our goals are for tonight and a refresher on the Main Streets on Halsey project. Talk about some elements of kind of moving forward and kind of advancing that vision, though it's expressed in Main Streets on Halsey. And talk about whether that vision still resonates and it's, he was right, considering you've done other planning, the Town Center Plan and others since then. And then I'll give you an overview of what the kinds of zoning changes that were recommended as part of that project for Troutdale. We can kind of open that discussion back up to whether those kinds of changes, conceptually, you think makes sense or should we continue to develop those or I think that the code is kind of where you're at in the future. So goals for today, as I mentioned, review some of the previous planning efforts. Talk a little bit about what some of the other cities have done to implement this vision for the kind of development that the three cities we want to see on Halsey and discuss our opportunities to support that vision. And so specifically, I think the question is, we're looking for input from you on today is, you know, what questions do you have about some of either the barriers in the zoning code to the kind of development that I envision by Halsey or opportunities that we, well, yeah, are using the zoning code and zoning incentives to try to get the kind of development that you want to see. And then, again, juice of what we can forward with refining, revisiting these codes and these conceptual code changes. So it's getting to the Main Streets on Halsey project and why originally did the three cities work together on this joint planning project for Halsey? So when we say Halsey, we're talking about the corridor as it connects all three of the cities in the area here. So it's not only a street that connects all three of the cities and is important for its transportation function, basically, but it is, in a way, a natural kind of main street for each of these cities, particularly for Fairview, that really wants to kick forward their town center as well as for Wood Village, they are kind of centering on Halsey 258. And then, of course, for Cottail, compared to the other two cities, you have a little more developed town center, a developed main street here downtown. But Halsey is kind of the gateway to that main street, right? And it's part of a broader downtown and town center. And so, you know, I think the Main Streets on Halsey plan focused on Halsey because of the opportunity to try to ensure that new development on the street was benefiting the local communities, was bringing jobs, was adding to affordability, creating amenities on the street. And so it's not only look at kind of how to make sure that the street itself functions well as a transportation corridor, but how do we get the kinds of development that communities like to see on Halsey? So it's kind of the impetus for it. And, you know, another reason, if we kind of zoom out and think about Halsey in Troutdale in a broader context, it is one of the, you know, it's, we think, as Troutdale's saying goes, it's the gateway to the gorge. And Halsey is kind of one of the gateway to Troutdale, too. It's how many people will experience the city, enter the city. And it certainly has the possibility, potential to build on creating some new destinations, new housing, new businesses that would build on the fact that Edgefield is on Halsey, that it connects to your downtown, hopefully the future Confluence site and amenities along the river in that area. So it's a part of that brand that is an important corridor for how, from a broader regional perspective, that people experience Troutdale. And that's true for all three of the cities. And so you can think of Troutdale or as, think of Halsey as a front door for each of these cities. It's in that way, it's important for how people think of the three communities and they experience it, they travel down Halsey, and that's kind of what a lot of people know about Troutdale or Wood Village and Fairview. So it contributes to the identity and perception of the community in that way. It's also, you know, it's a place where if there are high-quality, new development, new amenities that get built, I mean, one part of the corridor has a positive benefit than the other part. So there's kind of spill over benefits of, you know, it's a new, some new restaurants, some new retail shops in one part of the corridor. One likely that love more visitors, more destinations for visitors to go to throughout the corridor. So that was really the idea behind the Main Streets on Halsey concept. And this was a graphic that was in that 2017 plan to kind of illustrate the opportunity on Halsey. And a few elements here to call out was focusing on some of those major intersections with the major streets, especially the ones in our south that connect up to I-4 and trying to focus on some gateway kind of concepts and those examples. Which Cottail already hasn't, in a way, in terms of the, you know, just the actual gateway sign. But also those are very visible intersections, so it's focusing on those as gateways of the community along the corridor. Another thing here that I can point out that is sort of unique about this corridor is just how many large vacant or underutilized sites there are, still remaining. Some of them have been built since this map was created or developed. But so, and the ones in Troutdale, many of those are still totally getting utilized. And so there's some opportunity there to shape, develop them on the corridor. So that Main Streets on Halsey Action Plan didn't have a vision, particularly, they didn't have to put that on here. It said the neighborhood's connected to Halsey will prosper from improved mobility, access to that opportunity, development, essence. So it's pretty broad statement. Some of the, if you get into some of the details of the plan document, some of the things that are talked about are things like having mixed-use development so that you have both kind of activity on the corridor and both on day and night to a resident building there and also businesses. Having it be a walkable street with buildings that support walkability and create attractive pedestrian development. And then support for tourist-based economic development because, you know, there's so many connections with Edgefield, with the gorge, and Troutdale. It's a key build on that and great opportunities for big businesses that would also potentially contribute to a tourism requirement. So there's some, just the key ideas from the Main Streets on Halsey plan that we're going to refresh you on. And so as we look at kind of that vision from the plan and then compared to the existing conditions on Halsey today, you know, it's clear that there are some parts of the Halsey corridor that are, have a lot of opportunity to improve and to see new development that is consistent with that vision. So in the Troutdale segment of Halsey today, you know, there's quite a few kind of vacant or utilized sites and a lot of opportunity there. It also has in that way, partly because of the Edgefield site there, a rural character. It's actually kind of transitioned from more urban places and will be in Troutdale or would have been in previous. There's also some kind of single-use and big developments in that corridor. So there's the, I believe, the ODOT facility, which is not really contributing to your sense of a walkable place on the corridor today. Obviously, it's about your use in its own right, but... And then just kind of single-use residential, which, you know, obviously helping to meet your housing needs. But along the corridor is not really contributing to that vision or that hope, I think, that was in the Main Streets on Halsey plan for more mix of uses for destinations, for commercial, retail, such as that. So some of those, given those places that have commercials owning a mixed-use facility, you're seeing some of those standalone residential laws. So the Main Streets on Halsey plan had seven different levers or might say implementation programs, bits of things the cities could work together on and try to influence new development on Halsey. And so I wanted to bring this up just to recognize that there's a whole lot of different kinds of strategies. And that could be public investments, and the street improvements, or other infrastructure improvements. There could be other economic development programs that I think some of them are in the works or have been, have been starting to be developed already, but others are just ideas in this plan, I'm not sure if they've been carried forward yet. But the two that I wanted to bring up today that were related to the earlier work that we've worked on are the number four here, so regulatory provisions. So what kind of ways can you shape, tweak the development code to make sure it's encouraging the kinds of uses that we like? And then incentives for development. So incentives could be financial, it could be that form, but also could be a form of zoning incentives. So for example, if you build a kind of project that we want you to see, you could get a bonus and some additional building practice, as possible to do that. Those are other ways to structure it. So just wanted to recognize that this isn't about just kind of the code and setting guidelines of what people can't do, but it might be the way through to offer a carrot, trying to encourage developers to do certain things that folks see. So I realize this rendering is a bit out of, out of date now because there was new living done as part of the Town Center Plan, but I wanted to bring it up because there was some work done on this, on this key site here at 257, I think called Perford Track, and the Town Center Plan. But it just reflects the value of focusing on some of these key sites in Halsey. And so one of the concepts that was developed as part of that Main Streets on Halsey project was the idea of a civic building being, you know, a good use of that location. And then specifically, a hotel was a vision is one thing that would be, that you could fit in that site. And so part of that project, the site readiness project, was to work with property owners to develop some of these concepts and help them to maybe rethink who they're targeting, the kinds of developers you might reach out to, and what kind of development that could possible on the site. So this is the outcome of that, that part of the project, just wanted to refresh on that. I think it's broadly consistent with some of the rendering that I saw, saw somewhere of the idea of that site. So, you know, one of the things we looked at closely in the earlier work was how feasible is it to build the kind of mixed-use development, particularly vertical mixed-use development that was envisioned by the Main Streets on Halsey plan? And one of the challenges we ran into was that today and many of the zoning districts along Halsey, including some in Troutdale, but also in Wood Village and Fairview, was the maximum heights that are about, usually about three stories, are a significant barrier to that vertical mixed-use development. And so that's true today, but it'll be true even more true in the future as the cost of land, the construction goes up, building at that higher density is what makes that kind of development more feasible. And so something we found in the previous work and informed some of our recommendations of maybe allowing a little bit extra height in exchange for what the building, the project is there for mixed use, in exchange for certain amenities or features that the developer would provide. And so I think that's also somewhat reflected in the kinds of development that is happening in Troutdale today and then also nearby on the Halsey corridor. So one of the challenges is that new retail and office space, the market for new space is relatively limited. And so, particularly compared to residential, so many developers today play in much, much less, well, like with the residential, the retail or commercial space. And so I think what you're more likely to see in lieu of the incentives programs to try to actively encourage mixed-use development is more standalone, multifamily residential. And so I say standalone, I mean, just residential, single-use. And so I think I'll let it be a couple of projects. One of these might be on the corridor, I think, and there's not, whatever of that character. So three, four-story apartment buildings. I think that's what's penciling for developers today and that's probably what most likely in Halsey and some of the mixed-use things in the future. So with that in mind, hope before I get there, so we also just want to recognize that the cities made a lot of progress, as I mentioned, since we were working on the 2019 to 2020 or so project and the Town Center Plan has been adopted and Halsey is one of the sub-districts within the plan. This Main Streets on Halsey project was intended to cover a lot of the area. And so, you know, we know that the cities made a lot of progress in developing a vision for what the downtown should be. And so I think there's a lot, sounds like a lot of successes to build on there and maybe taking another look at the zoning of Halsey as you had in other areas that I've done today. So I get to get into a little bit more on what the actual zoning changes and code changes were recommended. So I think a good way to think about this is just kind of thinking about sometimes the tension or conflict between what the community wants to see in the development and what the developers is kind of need so we can make that project work financially. So on the one side, community goals, so having those new commercial spaces as well as season mixed-use development, that's good for tourism, it's also good for working jobs. So the project design that creates a really safe and attractive pedestrian experience, developer may want that, too, but that may not always be the top priority for a developer. So that's the heat of minds. The buildings that respect new corridors that define Troutdale, something we know in 2019, like the view down Halsey, seeing rock and rock in the distance was important. And so that would be something to preserve, but also views from up above Halsey, looking, how we could look at the word, were also something more important. And just building design that responds to Troutdale's character or your courses essentially. So that's just a selection of what we took away of some of the community's goals for Halsey. You know, developers' goals are things like, you know, being able to get a high amount of residential floor area density, because that's actually what's likely to achieve higher rents than the commercial uses. The ability to build up to four or five stories with that residential uses that would, that supports the ability to make that project financially viable. You know, having minimal design standards and preferably no discretionary standards, we're getting a good standard, we're getting a form of predictable process. So that's just what almost most of authors would be looking for. And so how do we kind of get what, think about what the developer wants, community wants, and try to get a code that matches those up so it's most likely you'll get the kind of... So this was the focus of where the zone changes. Well, I should, I should start with the previous concept for where these code changes could apply to implement the Main Streets on Halsey idea were broader than that. So they included a good part of what's in the downtown mixed-use and kind of the core of your downtown, your Main Street there. And I think having taken another look at it and seen all the work that's in the Town Center Plan and some of their code changes that are fully associated with that, that we would recommend if the city was to want to move forward, perhaps to focus more specifically on that kind of Halsey subarea of the Town Center Plan. So that area just west of 257, properties that from Halsey and the downtown mixed-use and general mixed-use zones. One thing that the previous code amendments didn't really consider the changes to the general commercial zone, which is where the Edgefield property is pretty west, that there's also an opportunity there to consider whether any kind of code changes that we explore that could be applied to that juicy zone.
Question, before you jump off this map? Where is Edgefield?
It's just south of that, I think it showed on the...
Is it further west?
Big red section.
Big red section, yeah. You know, just, that's, that's Halsey, you can see my screen there, yeah. So Edgefield is right down there.
Right down there. And this is existing zoning?
Yes.
Okay, and so then you've got another map that's going to show the changes to the zoning that you're recommending?
So what I was describing here is that the earlier version of the changes didn't recommend any changes to general commercial zone. And so just pointing out that's an opportunity, if you were to want to revisit this issue, there is, you know, something to get, development site there, and it's a site that could be developed in the future and that will influence the character of Halsey. So just pointing out that is an opportunity for the future. Could the, could you figure out code changes would...
And doesn't Edgefield own... And doesn't Edgefield own all of that property in the red?
Yes, on the north side of Halsey. Okay. So a key part of the the Main Streets on Halsey code amendments that the other two cities implemented were having some kind of objective design standards that could apply to redevelopment of the corridor. And so I'd say this was this was kind of part one. And then part two were some changes to maximum building heights and in some cases, minimum parking requirements, maximum density in order to lessen those barriers to vertical mixed-use development, while at the same time offering or requiring some new design standards to get quality redevelopment that would let the people kind of redevelop that creates an attractive pedestrian experience. And so the the design standards had a few different elements. These are a set of kind of base requirements that apply to all new developments. And so these are now in, a version of these is now adopted and in place in Fairview and in their commercial zone, according to Halsey and in Wood Village. And so what it addresses is things like, you know, ground floor height, having a little bit taller ground floors, create more attractive storefronts on the ground floor, ground floor windows, you have in your town center area, creating some views into the commercial spaces and activities, weather protection to create a more comfortable environment for pedestrians, you know, screening of kind of more unsightly utilities, oriented buildings to corner or public spaces to corners, kind of like this, the, the new building in the Gitter downtown does well, I think. Having, and then there was a couple of additional standards that applied in certain areas to have minimum kind of civic space or plaza space. So some kind of open space that was publicly accessible, that would create some of that sense of a placemaking and a pedestrian oriented space. And then exterior lighting abilities and then create a sense of safety, a walkable place. That's kind of the base set of standards that apply. There are also these incentives, which I mentioned, for, these are some of them. There were a few other incentive options as well that would allow you to either get a height bonus or in some of the other cities that density or a bonus or parking reduction. And so those are the things where like if you provide a vertical mixed-use development, you'd have a height bonus. With standalone residential, you wouldn't be able to afford that, that's a bonus. Providing smaller scale commercial spaces, this is something that actually is one of the things that new mixed-use buildings sometimes don't do so well, is they create really large commercial spaces, which really only work for your Starbucks or your national chain bank. And so the challenge that if you get the developers to build some mixed-use smaller spaces, that'd be more likely to get your local business that's more affordable than going there. So especially your local restaurants, something like that. And so that could be an option of the kind of design choice you could try to incentivize with code. And then we had a general high-quality design option, which would, if a developer incorporates an alert design elements that are spelled out and in a, in a menu in the code, they could be able to provide a height bonus during that. And so it's one of those elements are. Or there was graphics in the code that really clearly explained the vision and articulated well, sort of just example here of some of the graphics to explain the ground floor design standards for mixed-use. And then there was this, the point system here. And so beyond that base set of requirements that we talked about, but a way to, that was a vision to, to, you know, provide a little higher level of design while also creating a fairly predictable system for developers, which some cities can do this, to create a kind of menu of options. And so each of these options has a objective design standard associated with it that's relatively measurable, clear. And so what you're asking developers is, you know, incorporate a minimum number of these to meet the number of points we're saying you need. And so you can set the points to encourage certain kinds of features you want. So if you really want to see taller ground floors, or you really want to see plazas on Halsey or public art, those are things that could be some of the higher points and be encouraged. So it's a way to try to influence design in a way that also has some predictability for the developers. So again, trying to strike that balance between preserving usability and how it can be relatively, both is relatively primitive to developers, but also the types of design outcomes that we want. So that's it. Hopefully, just a kind of an overview of the kinds of code changes that were adopted by the other cities and that were had been previously recommended for Troutdale. But I think we just got to open up to you, so what what kinds of questions do you have about those, either those code changes or the comments up for the Main Streets on Halsey?
Questions from Mr. Kell.
Hi, there.
Commissioner Makeoff.
Thank you. I'm new on the planning commission. You haven't seen me before. First time meeting you. Nice meeting you. Nevertheless, I'm on the planning commission. I've heard a lot of dissatisfaction with the apartment buildings that are being built on Halsey. Four stories of apartment buildings does not maintain the city's stated vision for keeping a small-town feel. Four stories is what they do down in Portland and Lentz and other areas. It's not what Troutdale has done. It's not what Wood Village has done. That whole development along Halsey, you had a picture of it, two, two stories, not even, a lot of them are one-story commercial, right on that 242nd, across the street, across from Stomping Grounds Coffee, that's a mixed-use, I guess, two-story, maybe three-story. You're recommending five stories because that's what developers need. So my question is, how does that maintain, how are you building in the small-town feel on a five-story building that looks like something that they build downtown Portland? That's one of a couple of questions I have. A statement I'd like to make is, I think what developers need, while that's certainly of concern, ought to be, and I'm going to make this to the rest of the planning commission, ought to be on the bottom of the priority list. What the community wants has to be at the top, and it's not weighted evenly. I see what the community wants in terms of a small-town feel, economic opportunity, et cetera, has got to be at the top of the list. And what the developer needs in order to build it is going to take us away from what the vision is. You don't see any five-story buildings going on in the town center. Okay, so that concerns me. Should we just take one question at a time?
Sure, yeah.
And so the question is, how are you maintaining what in your plan, or in the plan previously, takes that small-town feel into account?
Right. And I mean, I think it's, I think it was one of the challenges when we're working on this, this concept in with three different cities and they all have different visions, right? And they want, they want similar things at Halsey, but maybe not quite the same thing. And so I think when we, to be clear, when the, in the code amendments, and I pull up a map, I think you'll be able to see this, but the ones that were previously prepared, they had, I believe it was maintaining a three-story height limit as is today throughout the Town Center area and the just the zoning on Halsey, allowing a bonus to up to, I think, four stories and maybe five, I think it was maybe four stories for projects that met certain criteria we're talking about, with providing certain features and amenities that we wanted. I don't know if we got that balance right that first time, and that may not be the right solution. And we kind of delivered the code amendments to the city and we had some work, the back and forth, and that seemed like at the time what the staff thought might be, might be the right fit, but we, we learned from the city and needed to pay a lot of impact after that of, oh, that wasn't quite right, or we want to work on this Town Center Plan and rethink heights and parts of them. So I don't know, I don't think I have the right solution for how you balance small-town feel with the economics development, real, the reality that if, if, if the code is too restricted, then you may not get any of the development. So we were trying to strike that balance, and maybe we didn't. Yeah, I'm not sure I had the right solution. And so what I was presenting there, five stories, was just purely from the people building factor, this, it's clear that that would make it more likely that you get the vertical mixed-use wall, which was kind of the ideal for this kind of corridor, since we understood it. And maybe that's still the ideal, but maybe it's not how you most like to see it on Halsey. If that's the case, I think there are other options where you can really height more, but still enable a potentially usable, usable program. There are other ways to regulate height, to put it in right parts of the site that limits the impact, that may not feel a small-town feel. Height-oriented buildings could be one thing, protecting the new corridors, which is also part of the code. There is actually a corridor along Halsey that's limited to height three stories, even if you had a bonus, you couldn't, you'd get over three stories in order to protect it from people or from that to one. So I guess your answer enters, I'm not sure we have the right solution. If that's a major priority and something like five stories is initially very concerning, then I think we would have to go back and draw in more a little bit.
Commissioner Makeoff, do you mind if I jump in on that?
No.
Same topic.
Same, yeah.
I just was curious if you have kind of a working knowledge of like what else might be common in terms of what is desirable for concessions, if not for building height? And you mentioned density, I know that comes with height, but is there anything else that is typical in those situations?
Yeah, the kind of incentives that typically work, so it, it depends a bit on what your current standard is set at. So it's always relative to what, what they would be able to do. So they're thinking about what they do today, which is what they do with using, cost of using means. So let's say I have to build some plazas or a person's basement in the middle of the building, the cost of doing that gives me outweighed by the benefits of the incentive provided, so it's a free site. Or so the others that would potentially be effective, the other cities use here are primarily height, maximum density, but I don't believe you have a maximum density that would apply to people today, you know, applies to standalone residential building, so that may not be effective. And minimum parking requirements, that I know that has been influenced by changes in state law already, and that may not ultimately be reliable in terms of any law, where I'd have to look closer exactly what they're set out now, whether that's aligned with what we're making, think they can make work. So those are probably three, parking, height and density. Some cities have floor area ratio requirements, they set a certain floor area ratio, if you can't exceed that, that could be another option. That's kind of a way to indirectly control the scale, intensity of the development. Like say you have four-story buildings, but your overall floor area ratio can't be such as this. It's hard to picture what that looks like ratio, but the intent is to control the overall, the intensity of the amount of floor area. Yeah. Open space reduction could be another one, if there's a minimum open space requirement.
Make a comment.
Commissioner Lee.
So while you were guests for talking, I was thinking that Fairview and Wood Village don't necessarily worry about the small-town feel, but I noticed that most of the apartments, the ones Cedar Ridge are doing, and they're still three-story, not four and five, as well. I do wish that the apartments on Halsey, at retail on that bottom floor or something, because we've got right up against Halsey with people in there. And one other idea I had is that we should consider roof colors. I live up on Cherry Park. I live down on that new complex there. It's a black parking lot, basically, that I'm looking at, and everything just is black.
Which complex, you tell me.
The new one going on Halsey.
Multiple rows and rows of.
The old Handy property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The north side of Halsey, 238?
Yeah, that one. So it's just already apartments at the top of that, and now comes all down the hill. So it's just basically a black parking lot coming down.
Goes so low with teal outfit.
Yeah, yes. Some other earth-friendly color.
So I guess going back in time a little bit, wasn't it about like 2021 when we read this, we did this the first time? Okay. And one of the things that came up then was the five-story, the 55-foot height. And that was somewhat of an issue back then. And then it wasn't you, but there was a planning commission work session or meeting where everyone was together. We were with Fairview and Wood Village.
Yeah, all three of them, yeah.
Yeah, and we expressed some concerns. And then after that meeting, there was model code that went to the council. And I just think it would have been more effective if that would have come back to the planning commission so that they could have worked on that and edited that and maybe come up with something a little bit more effective. And I don't know if that was because of the grant or something that it had to go that way, but it certainly had the councils and the planning commissions kind of going like this. Because it's.
Yeah, I don't recall if there was why, or the process worked out that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think one of the challenges we had is trying to be responsible with all two cities to get to, you know, they didn't have to be the same, but there was an idea there in the grant, it was on the project, and also a hope that there'd be some common set of developers that could apply across the series. And that's a hard, hard thing to do.
Yeah.
I think we probably needed more, more time, more back and forth with the planning.
And it just seemed like it was a one-shot deal, and then it goes to council, and then council's like, why are you guys doing this? And we're like, we didn't do anything.
Right.
Which was kind of hard for the city to kind of get through that and around that. So like on the Halsey piece, have we engaged McMinims? Any conversations?
So because at the time we started that project in 2021, the recommendation from the staff, from the Troutdale planning staff at the time, was to not, was to exclude that zoning district that would affect the McMinim property.
Okay.
And so we didn't have to really engage with them.
Okay.
But didn't do that process.
And one of the things on your map, you were looking at that zoning or that part, those parcels in particular. Now, they got a conditional use permit to grow crops on the north side of Halsey. That was going to be their intent? So I was just wondering what we were, we were thinking about rezoning that?
But really, I just pointed out on the map today, just to revisit, is that a viable opportunity to get forward, if they're heading, they assume that it is a big property that they're calling, assuming that that's not on the table, per se. If they're invested in long-term use, that's unlikely to redevelop.
And I don't know, and I think we have wetland on the backside of that, don't we, Heather? Okay.
Yeah, and it may not make sense to try to influence the zoning there, because that just, it'll be pretty unlikely, and any, any considerations that, that didn't want to take it off the table, nothing, it's a big, big site. How about that would have an influence on the corridor?
So I guess I just, speaking from my perspective a little bit, is if we go like we've got three stories up to 257th, and then all of a sudden we go four or five stories, that almost seems like you're going into a whole different place. I don't know, at least it seems like it. I know that I personally have gotten some not-so-positive feedback on the Fox development already, and it's not even done yet, you know, because it is so tall. And that's not even with a five-story or 50-foot height. And that's not even with a five story or a fifty foot height.
That's the four story apartments there.
That's three story and a big variance is what that is. And do you know, you could answer this, this would be helpful. What is the right of way on Halsey? I know it's big. You could practically stick I eighty four on there, the amount of room they've got.
Yeah. Um, I actually couldn't answer that from the top of my head. Um, but it's the, um, right away off recently. It's, I mean, it's, it's two lanes and mostly second and Trump. And I think, I think the road is probably longer than before.
Yeah, for some reason I was thinking it was like pushing eighty.
Really?
Total?
So then they'd have to, but you'd have to build that out quite a bit to get eighty feet out of there. I mean, it drops off on both sides.
Build it out. You have a right of way that's eighty feet and you could use whatever portion of that you decided to, but that would be what your right of way would be. So that would be the potential that you could have.
You've got those new townhomes there that are facing Halsey. So what is the gap from there to front door to the other side? Is there maybe more right of way on the other side? Cause they seem to be right off.
It could be they're off a little bit, but that's probably what, probably forty, fifty from center line, forty from center line. Those would probably be.
Okay. But it's very wide, okay.
Yeah. It's a little wide. Um, I was just gonna say in a final, it's kind of, it's really difficult. I get it to have three cities with completely different needs and everybody wants to walk their own dog. And it's really hard to get everybody together and get a common vision. I totally understand that. And I applaud you for the work that you guys are doing. We're just trying to figure out how it fits in for, for us. Commissioner Minkoff?
Well, I, I want to go back to your comment about McMinimans. I think it would be a mistake to not incorporate them into the discussion. I think giving them some heads up and what it is that the city is planning, what it is that all three cities are planning may persuade them to use some portion, maybe the frontage to the street to open that up to development, commercial development, again, maybe a three-story buildings and not use it all just for crop growth or pig farm or whatever it is that I've heard over the years that they want to use it for. I, it, it reminds me that the I five bridge, Columbia Crossing, uh, was all set to go after four hundred million dollars of investment, except nobody decide, nobody thought to bring the coast guard into the discussion. And they found out with the coast guard that the bridge they were planting was too low. So I think it'd be a big mistake to not just let them know and see what they might be able to contribute or what thoughts they have. Um, that's on that. My other, um, my other question, well, it's kind of two-part, is Halsey is a major auto traffic corridor. And again, in, in everything I've read and so on, I don't see anything where we're accommodating automobile traffic somewhere else. Are, do the plans take into account that that's all got to be shifted to Cherry Park Road and then Gleason? Or it's all going to get shifted to Stark Street, you know, as the main east-west corridor? Just deciding that we're going to take those few miles and drop them down to twenty miles per hour because we want people, we want it to be a destination means that traffic's going somewhere else. And we, I just, I, I keep seeing planning and development agencies and groups all over the metro, part of the metro area, not taking much of that into consideration. They, they say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna bring Stark down to two lanes. We're gonna bring Gleason down to two lanes because we're gonna put bicycles and parking along the side and nobody's bicycling. No, no grandma is gonna hop on her cycle and go shopping and then bring home four bags of groceries on her bicycle. It ain't gonna happen. We just, we've got too much distance. And everybody talks about this idea of a twenty-minute neighborhood. So far, nobody's come up with a good idea on how to actually implement that. So.
Commissioner Minkoff, where'd you see that? I didn't see the twenty mile an hour thing.
This is rumor.
Okay.
That if we make this, this, uh, town center, main streets on Halsey, that the, that the traffic will be, will be dropped to what it is going down Main Street in Troutdale, twenty miles an hour. All the way down. And it's gotta be discussed. If you don't plan to do it, then you're gonna have forty mile an hour, thirty mile, thirty-five mile an hour traffic that's gonna go down through pedestrian areas.
I mean, you look further up Halsey to where they have implemented this with new construction down Fairview, um, Wood Village, those apartments. I think that's still in the thirty mile an hour, like commercial, standard commercial range. I mean, I don't think there's any reason to believe it would just automatically drop based on further development per se, like that significantly. I mean, that, that downtown area is a very particular feel with very small road at the very end of the line. Um, and you're absolutely right, like Halsey, Main Thoroughfare coming into town. But, you know, based on, on that alone, I think we have some wiggle room to make those kinds of decisions.
And let me, let me just. County decision anyhow, wouldn't it be, Mr. Kim?
Yeah, county, the, the owner of the road, I believe, yeah.
Well, let me just add to that, that I was on the Gateway Redevelopment District Community Negotiating Group. And the very first thing they did before they spent a dime on any kind of improvements, which actually dried up pretty quickly and then really nothing got done in Gateway, is to drop the speed limit on Halsey and Widler to twenty miles an hour. Because they wanted safe passage through what they expected to be a much greater use by pedestrians and bicyclists and so on. So I'm telling you that it may not be in the paperwork today, but if we don't bring it up and discuss it, it's gonna happen anyway with no plan for how to accommodate that.
Okay.
So that's what I'd like to say. The other, the other side of the automobile traffic issue is parking. So we, if we're gonna be making all of this destination, like Northwest Twenty-third Avenue destination, where will, where will parking go? Are we gonna build up, you know, five, that's where your five-story buildings are gonna come in for all the parking that, for all the, the foot traffic we want to bring in. Is, is there any discussion about parking accommodation?
As you know, the challenge with parking right now is the state mandate. For housing, basically, we don't have to require parking anymore.
Yeah. I know, because they want everybody on bicycles.
Okay. So I mean, some of those things are out of our control.
Well, the mandate says you don't have to.
No, the mandate says.
The mandate doesn't say. What?
The mandate says they do not have to provide.
Do not have to, but it doesn't say that you shall not provide it. It just says you don't have to.
I understand that, but they're not required to.
Yeah, but nobody's coming in if they can't park.
I understand that too.
So I guess, um, I, in terms of the, the transportation issue you've got first, so I know there, um, was, um, a, um, a grant that was worked on between the three cities for a streetscape plan of sorts for, for Halsey. Um, and I know there was some progress made on that, um, after we finished up our contract with Trump. Uh, and so I know there have been some conceptual designs for, uh, changes to Halsey. Um, I don't know exactly what they look like or how far along they are, um, or whether they would be, you know, tentative to actually, um, pair that reducing the speed limit if in fact they have on, um, uh, come much to volume and needs, video suggestion. So I can't speak to it specifically, I know.
Uh, actually, yeah. So they have been working on that. Um, uh, you know, my first week here, I went to a, a meeting regarding the streetscapes on, for making street on Halsey. Uh, they're very, very preliminary, but they have done a bunch of research for, I believe it was four or five different styles of streetscape. And it doesn't mean that that's one solid streetscape from one end of Halsey all the way through. It would vary depending on the need of the, in the location. So for example, if, uh, McMinimans did not want to develop that area. And then when you keep that as it is, they're not going to be willing to say they don't want to develop that area. That would look very, that section of Halsey would look slightly different than the section that's maybe from downtown to Halsey. And the reason for that is to incorporate parking along, along the, the street, uh, incorporate, uh, green trees along with bike and ped pad on the outside. So, uh, and that's to keep the pedestrians and bicyclists away. Uh, this is the one that they're leaning towards. Again, nothing's been set in stone, just very preliminary. But from their studies that they've run along Halsey and other areas, style that has parking on the edges with two lanes at the center turn lane, so you can turn left or right, uh, at intersection, or, you know, the street, off the street. And then having ped and bike on the side, separated by tree buffer and, and landscaping strips. Uh, and then development on the other side of that. So that's their initial kind of idea that they're leaning towards. Um, and again, that might change. They talk, you know, as many of you know, on the sides of Halsey by McMinimans, it drops significantly. Rather than building that up, having the bike and ped drop down with it, so it's separate from the road altogether. Redevelop with more lighting and sort of this thing like that in order to keep it separate, safe, and then have it rejoin depending on. And then along with that is also updating the, uh, they have a schematic to update the intersection at two fifty seventh and Halsey as well. To make that a safer intersections, it's one of the most high incident rate intersections in the area. So. That's very preliminary.
What are they doing to two fifty seventh and Halsey? I mean, to digress, I'm just.
Uh, they just want to, uh, update, uh, make the turn lanes more visible. They put in, um, easier ped and bike location, um, on the side. So there's, uh, those curb buffers. Um, so that would, because it is a truck route, so obviously they don't want to affect that. That's primary. Um, but there is a lot of, uh, pedestrian incidences in that intersection. So a lot of people aren't using the walkability of that location, uh, for that reason. Um, to park, say, somewhere on that side and walk down, down because it is, it's a dangerous intersection. So they have a couple of schematics of how to, uh, better improve that vertical pedestrian safety, bike safety and also collisions for vehicle safety as well.
Is the idea of a bridge that they've talked about crossing over two fifty seventh part of this?
No, that is, that is.
That's a separate?
Yeah.
What's the next step in all this planning?
Hang on a sec. Uh, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, thank you Chair Stephenson. Um, just have a question and a comment for the speaker. I'm having a really difficult time hearing the testimony table, by the way. Here Commissioner Minkoff perfectly fine. He's loud and clear, but the speaker's barely audible. Um, so not sure I'm gonna get my answer, my question answered. Uh, my question is, um, if the speaker happens to know what's going in next door to stomping grounds? And my comment is the, uh, byway developments where Wood Village City Hall used to be. They seem to be struggling mightily to, uh, lease those, uh, commercial, um, spaces. I don't think there's anything, I think they're all entirely empty. And one more comment, um, to Commissioner Minkoff's comments about, uh, building height. Um, I think the last thing people in Troutdale want is something that looks like what Gresham did on Civic Drive. So I think that'll be it for me for now anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm, I'm not sure about the specific, specific project, um, related to close to stomping grounds copy, um, so can't speak to that. Um, the, the Byway project, um, I think that's actually a, um, um, a pretty good example of some of the challenges that developers are having with, uh, building retail spaces, um, today. And that's not unique to, to, that would be able to do a trout table, this part of the, um, per se, it's, it's almost a national, uh, issue. Uh, and so I think, um, I think it kind of illustrates one of the, the challenges with a, with a mixed-use kind of corridor that you have on Halsey is the community, I think, wants to see new commercial uses, wants to see new amenities, um, that they, uh, that they use. Um, but, um, uh, the, the market is limited and it's, it's a risky proposition, um, for a lot of developers that have to build new retail spaces. Uh, and so I think that's why we bring up this option of, of, can you, can you make it more attractive in other ways for a developer to build a mixed-use project? In terms of not that city, not a housing, and so that can help to subsidize, uh, retail, which is exactly what's happening right now on that Byway project. Okay, if you develop, which is probably, um, that's what I meant, this is. They, the city requested those retail spaces be developed. I, I don't believe we have provided them otherwise. The city must have, um, that be part of it all.
And on that, the interesting thing with some of those is they've sat vacant for quite a while and they had a coffee shop and a florist lined up to go in there initially and that fell through. And they haven't been able to get anything to energize that space at all. And, um, I just wonder, you know, it's kind of the same thing that we're facing a little bit in our downtown is the way the market has changed and the way retail has changed. You've got more vacant storefronts, but then you also have situations where maybe, and I don't know if this developer is one, but maybe they're also not realizing the market that they're in, you know, from a rent standpoint. Um, it is a little different here. And it's, it's chicken and egg because everybody wants a walkable community and they want to be able to walk to things. But you notice when you look out here, you really can't walk too much of anything.
Well, one thing we do know is that retail tends to call the rooftops.
Yeah.
Kind of the same, the same, right? So, um, some of those retailers might have just been a little bit ahead of the rooftops there. So that as new housing is built, those, or the surrounding areas, those might become more attractive spaces and it could, um, could be filled up. But again, part of the, the idea behind the mixed-use development is that you're getting the rooftops too there and just a little support for the, um, and, you know, just on the corridor, not gonna be enough, but it can be part of that, part of the solution.
That help you at all, Mr. Wilcox?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thanks.
Not really, kind of, sort of.
Yeah.
And, um, so I guess now you're looking at next steps.
Sure, yeah, man. I can summarize what, what I know, what the, I think the, the staff are looking for, um, for me wrong. So, um, they wanted us to come back to kind of give a refresher with this effort that had been done in the past. And then, um, you know, I think at this stage, um, I think the, the question would be, really, do you want us to take a fresh look at these? Um, and, and I say us, but maybe I should say more to the city because it didn't need to be a speeding partner per se. But, um, the city want to take a fresh look at the zoning that applies and this, this part of your downtown and part of, uh, Halsey. Um, maybe some of those amendments that we've prepared, um, in sort of one, some, some of those maybe makes sense still, maybe some of them, yeah, maybe you might take a better approach. Uh, and I think taking a fresh look at it, maybe a little more of a system, the small town feel and what other strategies can be used to make it all that more feasible, uh, outside of height. If we don't, we're not ready to, we don't want to look at, and how we're building, which doesn't make sense in this part of them. Um, we, yeah, but strategies, it's not really important. And, and more about what specific design standards would, um, make, if you make sure that small town feel is, 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 uh, further. So if, if you were to look for, that would be the kind of concept, is, is taking a fresh look at this. Maybe not be combined with whatever, who's been looking at that, but maybe oddly similar, that would be good.
May I?
Go ahead.
I know what would help me, maybe it would help others. If we had, if I had some idea of what development is projected to happen along Halsey. We want certain sections to be residential, we want certain sections to be commercial, we want certain sections to be mixed use. We want certain sections to be farmland, whatever. That's going to help me to put in my two cents about how the zoning needs to change. Rather than say, oh, I guess this strip should be, you know, mixed use, but then we decide, no, actually, we don't want it to be mixed use right there. If, if that, if I could see some plan for what the end result might look like, that's going to help me then make the zoning change recommendations.
So that's probably just looking at what the zoning is, right?
No, it's not, no, because we're talking about the potential for changing it. Why would we change it, is the question? We change it because we want to see certain development in a particular location. And that, otherwise, no, we don't have to change anything.
I didn't...
You don't understand?
No, yeah, I could be lost. I didn't get that we were rezoning.
Yeah, so I think when we prepared the amendments 2021, the idea at the time was, in the part of, this part of Halsey, revision in the, in the plan, both the city's comprehensive plan, also the, the main treats unhealthy concept was primarily that mixed use development, that's the current form here. So with the idea that we love to see commercial, but we know commercial may not be viable for a direct project. It's this mixed use zoning, kind of like that, so you can have either or. And ideally, you have vertical mixed use is basically the version that probably would give you, you know, use the land sufficiently and give both.
Which would take, which would cause a zoning change?
Today, no, it would not.
Not today?
No.
Yeah, so that the, the analysis we did was, the mixed use zones on Halsey allow vertical mixed use, but there are barriers to that actually being developed. And so the, the zoning may be consistent in name, right? Broadway allows the uses you want, but it's unlikely to actually happen, because the economics of developing, the economics of it.
Today?
So today. And so that, so I think the, the plan is at least somewhat well understood between maybe the town center plan and the comprehensive plan. Or at least there's, there seems to be some, some somewhat so pretty clear reading for it. But our analysis was the zoning is not totally lined up for that, they allow it, but it may not be.
So, so I'm hearing the zoning is not lined up with the plan. Therefore, the zoning would need to change?
I should say the zoning, the map doesn't necessarily need to change. So the zoning districts that are applied there.
Yeah.
The underlying standards that apply into the districts are, are some of the challenges. So the maximum height in MU1 and MU2.
Right, so it's not rezoning, it's possibly changing some of the standards within?
Redefining.
Yeah.
Got it.
Commissioner Lee?
Well, along that, I was just trying to ask you, because you know all of this zoning, what zoning is holding up development of that? Kenny got it, the idea that there's really mixed use, they can go ahead and develop?
Mixed use, they can go ahead, and you look at, I don't know so much that it holds it up. I mean, certainly if it's zoned, commercial, you know, and you want to do single family, okay, that would be a problem, it wouldn't work. But when you say barriers, barriers to me are not so much as a generalization as much as they are for the parcel itself. There may be an issue with what I want to develop on this parcel in relationship to the code. And it may be a barrier, barrier for what I'm trying to do, but the next guy, that may not be a barrier for him.
That suggests that we're leaving the decisions of what will go where, what kind of development will go where, to the developer. Rather than the community saying, this is what we want here, and therefore we need to modify the criteria, if I have that phrase correctly, modify the criteria of the particular zone in order to allow for that.
Well, when you...
To remove those barriers.
But when you have a zone, let's say it's MU1, okay, as an example. You can do X, Y, and Z in MU1, and that's what you can do. Okay, maybe it's residential, maybe it's commercial, maybe it's industrial, you know, whatever it is, you can do those things in there. And then there's conditional things that you can do, and then there's things that you can't do. So it's kind of like, maybe the city might envision that this is going to develop this way, but the people that own the property have got a little different vision, and their vision may fit into the code. And so that's the way it gets developed. If that helps you.
Well, may, sort of. Let me br- bring up another specific, five-story hotel. Can that be built in the place where it's suggested to be built? Is it zoned correctly and no other criteria barriers for that?
So I just want to clarify, the four-story.
Four-story hotel.
So the, the uses will allow, which I'll likely, so it's not the use cases that are possible, but is the four stories would be what would be not limited to that, but the maximum height is third type of feet in that, that would be possible to build.
And that's what I'm talking about.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about making a, making the decision for what we want to go where. And then discussing what code barriers exist that won't allow that to be built. And making those recommendations, I mean, we can't change the code, but we can recommend that the, that the code, those zoning areas be modified. I don't know how different to say this, so I'm...
Okay, so...
Understood.
What you're saying then is to say, okay, we're going to raise the height to 50 feet, 60 feet, or whatever. That would be what you would be doing across the zones.
Why? You're talking, but you just mentioned parcel by parcel.
I'm saying...
You can't do it parcel by parcel, you'd have to do it for the whole zone.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you can, you can target areas within a zone through, you have like an overlay zone.
You could do an overlay, yeah.
You could do an overlay zone for...
So, okay, well, if you don't mind my pursuing this, for my education that I can be a better commissioner. If we say that in some areas, we want four-story, because we want a four-story hotel here. But we don't want four-story elsewhere. Just because we, we make the correction or the modification to say, okay, this zone, this whole zone allows for four stories, can't the city still deny building permits based on, well, we don't want the rest of it to be four-story, we only wanted three-story? Or you can't do that, they could not deny?
No.
Not if they meet the criteria for development.
Okay, yeah.
Then we're, we're not allowed to then deny just based on what we want as a planner. That's where we have, we have to look at the code and we are judged by the code.
Can the zone be broken up into smaller zones? So that you could say, well, just this area here is four-story, commercial, and then the rest, so we segregate?
You can have specific standards with an overlay, and that's what was mentioned.
Overlay, right.
If you're an overlay, for example, downtown has an overlay zone where they have specific guidelines and standards for development.
Okay.
And so certain things cannot go in there, if someone wants it to, because they have to meet a very specific criteria. In order to, and that's for, you know, keeping the same kind of style, same feel, building materials, color of what you can even have the facade be. So that's all within a different, separate section that is applicable to any property, any parcel within the downtown. So you could do an overlay zone, something similar to that for a long haul.
That brings me right back to my original statement. If we had, if I had some idea of what kind of development we want to have along this Halsey corridor, then I might have suggestions on how to create an overlay to make that happen.
The way you have it zoned, it's commercial and residential.
Yeah, well, we could do an overlay.
So to circle back on kind of what your initial, I guess, general proposal is, is to reexamine the kind of targeted areas to see what might need to change. For example, general commercial to mixed use in that area, so it does get developed closer along the lines to what the town center plan is at wanting, right? Is that correct?
That, that sort of thing.
In, in a nutshell, okay. And the other areas that you pointed out, I mean, one of them is already mixed use, correct? Those, that purple section there?
Yeah.
And it is currently occupied, I believe, by like a church and some other random... Bank of property in there too, okay. So that is currently mixed use. That other segment of it above Halsey and right at 257th is part of the town center zoning, which is essentially kind of what it's going to stay, is my understanding, as far as how that works. So your main objective is to reexamine the large parcel land, it seems like. And then also maybe take a look and see what redevelopment can happen in that area that's already zoned properly?
So I think, I think the larger parcel of the land would be contingent on, meaning with...
Of course.
Minimums.
Of course, I mean, there's nothing to lose of that.
There's anything, any reason to do that.
Yeah.
Which I think is probably the most important steps.
For sure.
In the general, in the darker purple, you know, mixed use area there. So, well, I guess I should say, in the original amendments, they were much broader and they, they applied to where it's now, it's now covered by the town center.
Okay.
So knowing that you've done that work, and you could have changes related to that, and so that's what I'm looking at. My assumption would be that hopefully that, that...
Okay, but another...
Yes, I think, I think it really is probably the McMenamins property, and then some of that MU2 zone, which is kind of on the edge of downtown.
Okay, and then your specific listed item for mixed use was that currently, correct everyone, what you're saying that currently, under those mixed use provisions, that only residential is also allowed within that to develop without any kind of commercial aspect whatsoever? Is that correct?
Yes, the zoning currently would allow a...
Residential.
So we, so we are able to reexamine that to make changes to that? Or is that like a straight city? I mean, because if we're talking about reexamining that, like you kind of mentioned like a modification on that? Is that what you're getting at, as far as being able to change that to have like a requirement for mixed use to include multiple types?
That's an option for you, you don't necessarily have to to, to the mixed use zone. In that location, you could adopt an overlay zone and say, this part, we want to prioritize having commercial uses. Therefore, standalone residential use is not permitted.
Yeah.
And it must be a mixed use private residential, that would be an option.
Got it.
You'd be more aligned with what we meant as the goal of the vision for that area.
Okay.
Most of it, long haul, see, they can do commercial and/or residential.
Yeah, yeah, so I think one of the key questions is, is all of that area developed as just residential? Would that be consistent with the city's vision for the area, is that what you would look for? And when we did the budget before, our, our director at that point was, we'd love to see mixed use there, especially or, or commercial, but primarily mixed use, we'd love to see it. So we looked at it, and that was why, what is the area to mixed use?
And I, personally, I would just say I'd love to see mixed use on that part of Halsey, but I just don't know that the market would bear that.
Which, I mean, if we don't do anything with it right now and continue to focus elsewhere on, you know, Confluence side or other projects to kind of further flesh out the city, and then kind of see what fits after that, and any market changes in the meantime, we'd have that option unless the owners decide to move forward with something in the meantime that doesn't quite fit that vision.
And the developer has the option too.
Right.
There, you have pretty flexible zoning there now. It's not that they're, they're general to development. Our assessment was, is there to the type of... That's, we, our assessment, that's not like... So it's a part of the challenge of the market, it's checked, how long is it possible? So, and that was the assessment at the time.
Sure.
If that's not a big priority in this part of town, then, and if you don't... For standalone residential development, you actually don't need four bikes to just to make it work. But it's much cheaper for retail. And that's because the, the market for residential is just wrong, but that development's intense along the zone. If you include the retail, it's going to be more difficult, it's not going to do that unless we do it with the entity.
Commissioner Lee?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back to Kevin's four-story hotel. Dean can go to, to develop a purpose property, can go before us and ask for a variance.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Which is how that's typically done.
Case by case situation, you can apply for a variance, and we can approve it or deny it.
Yeah.
So that, it's very true, the, the, so that's always an option. The downside of that is that it's kind of unlikely to happen. Or, although you, variance is very risky, and so they're not going to probably invest a lot of time in preparing a design for the project, preparing application for you, if they, if it's actually approved. So it, it's an option, but I don't know that it's a likely option. Likely to be used. There's always a developer as a specific vision and wants to do it, and we would look for it, but in general, they would take it for everything.
I would say that, you know, a lot of times they'll come in here if they, they think that it would likely pass, they would go forward, not like a zoning change or something, you know, that's much more difficult. But would you say you get a lot of them that don't want to do a variance?
We don't have too many. Well, this is from the research we've done for the previous code amendment, there haven't been too many that come through. Typically, if we have someone come in, we discuss with them that they are going to do the variance, they'll try to change their plan set to go, to move away from a variance, just because that's, that's an extra.
Says an extra step.
And, and yeah, and it's just a little bit more. It's based on the code, but then it comes to, depending on the size, as we know, it will come with planning commission. Where then it's up to, you know, whether or not approve or deny. And I think that's also where sometimes they're like, oh, well, let's just do something, keep it in a tech two realm to keep it more, just cut and dry, black and white, based on the code, rather, because variances can be a little...
Yeah, scary.
Yeah, but yeah, there's a little, it can be confusing at times, so.
Yeah, I think between 257th and Sandy River, if you ask for a four-story, you're going to get denied. You go that side of 257, you have a better chance of going four stories than you do downtown. Got you.
So do you have another question? Based on, I mean, you know, we talked about the grant, as far as whatever money is allocated for our end of the project. I mean, what are we realistically expecting to be able to accomplish based on whatever is remaining of those funds?
Right, so the, the grant was from Metro, it's been 2021, and that's been wrapped up, as far as I understand it. And so we're, we're no American contract under that grant. So you brought us a very small contract, just to come to this session with you, and then, and to just refresher, or the conversation back up. But, you know, it would need to be, if you felt you need, it's supposed to be before, as, I'm sure you, you would need the, the evaluation. Whether you, you're meeting, if it's forward, I don't know what's...
We still have an obligation under the grant.
Table, please. Thank you.
We still have an obligation to, 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 in our, in our, in our, under the grant. Um, for the grant, we still have an obligation to have a public hearing, that is, they may have to pass, and this is part of our obligation. After this work session, they just have to have a public hearing in front of you, um, to either approve or deny. Whereas you guys decide to bring two, three, four staff over. Those funds are.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Wilcox? Nathan?
Um, I have nothing to add to the discussion. Sounds like it's closing up, but I do have one final comment, uh, on the text of the presentation. On page three, uh, they state that the State Trail is due to be completed in twenty twenty four. And I, I follow the ODOT meetings pretty carefully and the Mitchell Tunnel is scheduled to be complete mid twenty four, but there's sections on either side of it that they're talking about not being ready until as late as twenty six, twenty six or even later. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Um, I I think it's been a, a great discussion and, uh, but I was, I also want to say, I think there's a lot of good work that's done here uh, that we can, we can utilize. I guess, I guess I'll paraphrase, I don't know that we're really ready to look at rezoning anything at this point in time.
Well, I mean, I think there's definitely, I mean, if that's the route we want to go, um, I mean, I think just even starting conversations with McConaughey, we have a good relationship, that's going to be kind of key to any of that. That would be the main section. I mean, when it comes to reworking the, like, what is required in the current codes as far as mixed use goes specifically, um, that is another story, I guess. I mean, we're looking at an area there that could develop completely as residential. If that's the case, and that's deemed so close to downtown, that might be, again, something outside of kind of the vision for the town center plan. So I wouldn't necessarily rule that out, um, at this point personally.
Rule which out?
Uh, I mean, reexamining the code.
Well, reexamining zoning.
Right, yeah, excuse you.
Okay. I'm just not sure what we would focus on rezoning.
Um, at this point, I, I think it would probably be more of a focus on, uh, I guess, what exactly mixed use defines in terms of, uh, redevelopment um, or any development in general, uh, when it comes to also mixing some other type of business, commercial, office or, or retail. I think is probably, I mean, that, that other portion of it again is determined by largely by having conversations with the penumens.
Right.
But I think with the existing coding, with the, um, kind of the focus being on that part there at the end of downtown also fitting in with that vision of mix versus a continuation of residential all the way up to downtown is kind of what I'm extrapolating from the discussion.
Yeah.
So I, I would say if anything, that would be something to focus on, um, as a starting point.
The McInnes property?
Uh, no, the, um, the mixed use definitions, I guess, with them is.
Okay. So relooking at those, the ones we did last year.
Attention.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on it?
Anyone else?
Well, I have a, just a general comment, if the, the grant is now used up and your work is essentially done to this point, then what is the next step for the planning commission in terms of moving forward with this Halsey Corridor Main Street? You know, connecting the three cities and so on.
And for that, I might invite our liaison up. Counselor White. Who's part of the Three Cities Committee, is that what it's called?
That's Halsey Corridor Executive Committee.
Okay.
I'm Mr. Bush, I'm the committee.
And you are?
Oh, I'm the one.
Thank you.
I'll rephrase the question or restate the question. Since the grant to this point is used up, we have no longer the services of.
Cascadia.
Right, Mr. Kimmel. What, what is the next step in continuing to move forward on this Halsey Corridor connection project?
You want to do it. I think, well, you know, you can't force somebody to develop their land, so you can't avoid applications to come in, but I think, you know, that, that area has always been, been designed to be our highest density. Town center overlay has a lower parking standard, but, um, I would say keep in mind too that, you know, when we worked with the Three Cities, um, Trumpville's automatically outvoted, because we really get, Wood Village gets a vote, and Ferry gets a vote, and the Trumpville gets a vote. So they seem, they kind of have similar needs, so. But Trumpville just makes its own line on, on this, it's our city. And, um, that's part, I think that's the part that frustrated me the most is, um, I thought they had wanted to gravitate towards the Trumpville look, that we got going. Um, but they didn't, they were really protective of their own city and their own heritage and history. So I respect that, but it doesn't mean we have to do everything they're going to do on this. And, um, it was nice to get the grant money and the, I would say, look at areas that are underdeveloped, you know, like I look at the other, the portal was all the way down.
Was all the way to Rockwood.
No, well, on the Trumpville side, well, into Edgefield. And Edgefield's going to do what they want, and, you know, they, they groom themselves to really be nice quarters, I think. Council, I just listen, you know, usually end up thanking them for what they've done. And they keep big setbacks and open space and their idea instead of deciding what they want to have a twenty foot wide path that goes along Halsey. So they're very neat in what they want to do, I think, um.
It's made out of kale chips or what is it like?
Who knows what they want to do, yeah. They're very creative and they kind of have to do that because of the mix all over locations. So we really don't have much left on that, and I find, you know, we got to realize we're trying hard to get a lot of, um, commercial in at the, um, the foot inside. So getting roofs on Halsey makes sense, you know. I agree that the byway seems to be a ghost town. Um, Bramick's having trouble, you know, we've got the Rio Shop and a few other things, but that thing's, the bunker is still empty, it's been empty for a while. So I think the more we can do for, for, um, getting roofs, you know. We kind of did, we're doing commercial first in our town, but and, uh, you know, the hotel, I, I saw the hotel and there was five stories in the ground, according to the picture. Guess my idea on heights, it's kind of hard to tell anyone else, no, now on Halsey, when we have a four story one. And, you know, we, we raised this in development charge of like a hundred and fifty four percent, a hundred and fifty six percent. So we really threw a bucket of ice water on, on development, so. I think they don't, they are definitely in need of some type of incentive since of, um, to, and to afford to build anything, you know, labor costs and construction costs and also what's required now in a building is, is extensive, all safety requirements and stuff that, you know, we never had to do back in eighties, nineties, but now you're, now you have to do it, you know, it's not cheap, so keep that in mind and I think it's just the overall, what, what would be the best fit, trying to help them get there. And, um, so I look at the other end, because we've got, we're not going to turn down buildings on our main street, and we have a nice main street. And, um, yeah, it's like really our section of Halsey before you get to two fifty seven. You know, they want to slow traffic down in the Two Cities because it is their main street, it's not really our main street. And, um, I like our main street, I like what we, it was done a long time ago, it was done very tastefully. It works, it's desirable, so. Just look at what, and the other thing is, um, we hired, um, Trip, Marvell, was that his name? And his brother.
Yeah.
When he did our, our marketing, yeah, I really liked what they, they came up with, with our fish logo. And I think they really captured Trumpville. And they hired that same group to do, um, the Halsey Corridor. At the last minute, some, someone didn't like what they came up with, and they did one of those two, two to one votes. And they, they went in a completely different direction, so. My personal preference is I think Trumpville is really kind of the head of the game. We also have that community enhancement fund where we're, um, we get money because we have a transfer station and we've been using that to do murals and sculptures and even our manhole covers of the seal. We, uh, drop in, eventually every, as manhole covers here replace, eventually every one of them will be one of those covered is what I've told. So I guess what I'm getting to is the only other real developable land along Halsey would be, um, like across from Blan auto, like the RV park. So I think if you could dangle a carrot under the, the RV park, smells, we might, we might see a build development going there instead of just an RV. I think it's a waste of property to add that, but RV parks are usually a placeholder. And they wait for things to get better, you know, a lot of it's footplanted, a lot of it's not, so. I, I think it would complement, uh, kind of go inside. Again, the only way a commercial is going to make it down there is if it, if it has a good customer base, so. And then, um, I also pushed hard for like a, I wanted a starting point and an ending point. And, um, we didn't really get that, I wasn't well happy with the intersection we got at the end of the Trumpville Bridge. But that is the end of the Halsey Corridor. So, you know, Blan auto park and the Sandy River and the bridge is, is I think an attraction enough down there that people are going to want to go there. But, because I know if, if I see something like a Halsey Corridor or something, I want to, I don't know if it starts, and I, I want to work, finish it. I've seen it all and I can check it off.
Like seventeen mile drive in Pebble Beach.
That's on the bucket list doing the Halsey Corridor.
I've done it. I've seen the big four.
There's a really nice house just before the Trumpville Bridge.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, I should, you know, I know those two residents are in the water session tonight. Uh, yeah, I do have own property on two of the, um, opportunity sites, the Peninsula Track. And I forget what they call the other one, Beaver Creek, or the Red Barn Museum and stuff. A lot of that property is actually, um, the buildings aren't in the footplank, but the surrounding land is. So it'd be difficult to, to do anything along there. I think it's just kind of nice the way it is, you know, you've got the Harlow House, the Red Barn Museum. It's definitely underdeveloped, there's a lot of rentals in along there, you know, one to two stories and they get like, uh.
But some of it's kind of been redeveloped into town homes and things of that nature. Would you see that probably continuing along the corridor?
They put the new theme mapping kind of, um, uh, put into that. They, they kind of raised the, the standard, the height, when they did their RV mapping. It's barely like two tenths, two tenths of a foot, a lot of the properties are in the footline, like the, I know the art center. So that'd be a great one for development, if you want the land there. They were talking about a trail that's going to go along, um, the creek. Like from the caboose on the west side of the creek, and it ended up ending up where the footbridge is, the Blan auto park, you know, yeah, sending Blan auto park. You have to cross Hall or at least the story corner of the highway.
Isn't that right, period?
Um, it is, but the city owns it, so they can parallel out the trails. They can be parking and trails and there's a whole bunch of things they can do that no one else can do. Because for the, you know, the good of the public. But, yeah, we'll see if that happens, it's nothing, it's not part of this town, but it's just being looked at. And they're really widening the sidewalk on the opposite side, but I think I told, do one or the other, it'll be, you know, wider sidewalk. If we have a nice trail along the creek, everyone's going to probably use that. I know it's a long, but an answer, but it's kind of an overall overview, my take on it. I was on it for almost four years. It's been a long, slow process. With any gals?
No, any questions for Counselor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Kimmel? All right.
No, I can just sum up, make sure, make sure clear, it sounds like, uh, it sounds like good amendments as they were structured before. Probably not right, I'm not going to make that, so. Those going to one, I would have to choose one more to consider than. So, yeah, the only other idea I have is, you know, if we're really just focused on that area, you know, in the general mixed use on Halsey kind of outside of the town center area, um, in ten, there's always a little bit of a commitment. I think that you want to focus a little bit more on, um, getting more specific, um, plan for, uh, that area. That would be a better kind of scope of work than for, for, for a project would be, okay, we, you know, we have all the other, all these other areas, right? And it's kind of there, you know, what, um, you know, what kind of element would be support there, all right? And if we get, we get some consensus with that, we're fine. Then you might go, go modify the code. Um, but yeah, it sounds like it's not quite the consensus we didn't have. And then in, in McInnes, yeah, that.
What they're thinking, yeah.
There's, there's some opportunity there, then maybe you could live it in and have to get it. That's often, uh, so a different kind of project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, can we take five minutes? All right, if you don't mind, we will recess until eight fifty three, okay?
Right.
Let's say that's just kickback out of being concentrated and thoughtful. Yeah, just pick that up and go. What does that look like to ha, to dangle a carrot in front of the, uh, in front of the owner of, it, it's so, it's privately owned?
Yeah.
The mobile home park?
The RV.
RV, excuse me, RV park?
You know, it's, it's a cash machine over there, you know, the rents are around six hundred and bucks. We're renting, we'll slide with some of that. We're renting it, slide with some of that and an hour and a super. A garden service. So it's, it's definitely a money machine, but, um, you know, if. When they, when we, when you breathe through a seven story height that you're close, I, because it's. It doesn't block any of the views. And I, I have two non-views. It's if, if three stories is going to block your view. But where's a verdict if you go up four story? You know, or in that case, if you go seven stories, it doesn't block any of the views because it's so down. You know, you know, it's all those restaurants.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
You're going, you're going to build a secret, same view pretty much. You're out there now.
But still, we're only getting four stories down.
And maybe on one there, a lot of the other thing, a lot of developers won't build over four stories. This story is totally different, you know?
Engineering wise.
Yeah. You're, you're really filing this. They want to do it. They're comfortable. They're on. Or I think they love to, a lot of them are also getting heat parked.
Yeah, that was, uh, that's the time. I'll show you guys pictures of those.
We have a whole lot of that ones on the year. We can't say much because they're.
Thanks again.
We had this situation with these apartments that are going in here.
Right.
They presented it to us and basically told us to our face at the meeting that if you guys don't work with us. We'll just wait till that first year. We don't have to do any more. And, you know, we worked with them and they, they came back after the first year.
Because Luba overrides the city? What is Luba? Excuse me?
Land, news board is like three people.
The governor. So that's Oregon law, Trump's.
Yeah. We're in, um, we're part of a class actually, lots of, uh, to fight out.
Good.
We have, we're supposed to have a whole, right? And, um, Trump still pushed that apart. It's kind of like Title III, you know, it's about the metro is trying to do it. Turns out they didn't have the force, but they took a lot of, a lot of pushing back was top of them. We want to work for the, um, the legal, so we're only doing the, for reminding all the cities, you know, we will. Now they just crush the, the key. It's like, why do you even have a little soul there?
Yeah, they're just going to override.
I mean, that's great. I'm happy for her. So that's cool. I'll get to know you guys better, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. She, she stepped right in.
Came swinging in. Perfect.
Being there for two weeks.
Yeah.
I was at her and she was like, yeah, you just like, okay, there.
Here, and here we go. Yeah. I got you.
This would be helpful for the.
She, she's been money.
Yeah.
There's money that I think was viewed, you know?
Right.
Our.
It's just me, I wish I had a truck, you know?
Solid.
You're good.
Glad to have you. That's a start.
You were saying earlier.
Right.
I love that part of town because it has kind of an old fashioned feel.
It's great. And it would, would be nice, I think, to somehow connect it better to the downtown. You know, because right now it's, I, like you said, the Harlow House, the Red Barn, they're, they're wonderful places. The Troutdale Arts Center and so on. But when downtown did the art walk. The Troutdale Arts Center was part of that. They had an open house one month, or maybe they did it each month. I went and sang down there one time. Nobody showed up because downtown is where this, is having this art walk. And yet the art. Sorry.
No, you're fine. Okay. Good evening. We are back in session. And our next item is case file seven, five, one, four, marijuana facilities and phyllosyvenes. This is a type four application. Planning commission be making a recommendation to the city council. And before we go into that, I'd like to explain a little bit about the planning commission and the procedure we will be following for the public hearing. Planning commission is an appointed seven member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the planning commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four year terms. They're strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. Planning commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use application and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the planning commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans and development regulations. For some land use applications, the planning commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council. Who renders the final decision. Quasi judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. Hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria, the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply. You must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. Planning commission accepts public testimony relating to this application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the planning commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding this application. Planning commission must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the planning commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision making. And when we open the public hearing, a reminder that this is a type four application. Quasi judicial public hearing legislative procedure. And so the planning commission will be making a recommendation to the city council who will render the final decision. And, um, with that, we don't have any conflict of interest or expertise communication with it being type four hearing. Um, is there any bias or anything that any commissioners would like to declare? Conflicts, bias, okay. And with that, we will open the public hearing for case file seven, five, dash, one, four, marijuana facilities and phyllosyvenes. Type four application. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Savinson. Uh, I have a presentation I'm pulling up, so I'll share the screen.
This is a bit of a retread.
This is a bit of a. Hello, everyone. My name is Dakota Meyer. I'm the associate planner with the city of Troutdale. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I will be presenting the staff report for proposed amendments to the industrial and commercial zoning district and miscellaneous uses and standards chapter of the Trapville Development Code under case file seven, five, dash, one, four. There we go. Uh, so here is a zoning map of the city and you can see the following areas represent the zones affected by this application. In red is the general commercial zone, in gray, the light industrial zone, and dark gray, the general industrial zone. Sorry, I know it's a little bit hard to read. I was trying to zone them in myself and it was very complex. So this is kind of gives you an idea. Those are the only three zones that are affected by this application. And the, there are two primary requests, uh, that we'd like to make today. Both requests are initiated by the city and the city is the overall applicant. We're proposing to update the use tables for the general commercial, light industrial, and general industrial zones to change the marijuana facilities use from conditional to not permitted. This change is in response to the city council's passing of ordinance eight, eight, two approving a ban on additional marijuana facilities. Therefore bringing the development code into compliance. The second request is to amend chapter five miscellaneous to reserve subchapter five point nine zero zero for future psilocybin standards. Draft regulations have not yet been drafted, have been, uh, are not yet available. We have not started drafting that. It's just to reserve the section for when we do have them and bring them forward. Uh, as just a little note, this is kind of a rebrief. Uh, you've heard this before. The reason why it's coming back to you is due to, uh, uh, noticing standards that were missed during the previous. So we had to separate this out from the other code amendment and bring it back, uh, making sure that we noticed via state guidelines. So that's why it's, nothing's changed previously, but we have to bring it back, uh, to make sure everything is proper. Here is a, a section of a proposed amendment. Uh, it's a brief overview. The amendments are in chapter three zoning districts. Uh, the zone, the changes are within chapter three and chapter five. Only change is changing marijuana facilities from a conditional use in the commercial general zone to not permitted. And three point four two zero in the use table for industrial zoning districts, the same as the previous section, changing the marijuana facilities use to, from conditional use in the light industrial and general industrial zone to not permitted. And then in section five point, or in chapter five, miscellaneous uses and standards, reserve subchapter five point nine zero zero for future psilocybin standards. Here is a, um, a view of what the new, or this is a redlined version of what the code is going from and to. Uh, so you can see in use table, uh, three point three two zero, the use table, yeah, for commercial. The C is crossed out and an N will be therefore not permitted. Same goes for three point four two zero, uh, for the light industrial and general industrial zones. We're crossing out, getting rid of the, uh, conditional use and changing that to not permitted. And then here is a snippet from what the code would look like, will look like, uh, for chapter five miscellaneous uses and standards. Uh, reserved in the section five point nine for future standards. So we're in psilocybin chapter reserved. Nothing under withhold in that space for now. Proposed findings were laid out throughout the staff report. Uh, the proposed, the city. The proposed findings are, uh, change in the development code does not conflict with applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. The public need is best satisfied by this particular change. And the change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Um, this staff, um, the staff believes all criteria are met. Uh, staff offers the following recommend, recommendation for the conduct of the October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the Trapville Development Code. Staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment to the city council for its consideration at, you got, future public hearings. Uh, currently from what I was informed, the next, if this, if it does move forward and is recommended approval. City council hearings will be Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, Tuesday, November fourteenth. However, these, uh, these could be changed depending on, uh, if, if, if this matter is continued to another day. Uh, so that is my brief presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to field them and, uh.
Okay. Questions for staff? Commissioner Leeny?
So, uh, previously in my, in the back of my mind, this is going to, there's a vote coming up in November of twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
That's right. So how does that affect this? How does this?
This aligns with the ordinance that was passed.
Okay.
Okay. So if the vote in twenty twenty-four fails, then we would redo the code, um, at that point.
So what, what would be the code at that point until it was redone?
So currently marijuana facilities are conditional use in the commercial, in the general commercial, light industrial, and general industrial zone. So if we were not to change the code at all, they would remain a conditional use. Currently due to the passing of ordinance eight, eight, two banning marijuana facilities in the city, that was remanded back to vote in November. Uh, the code is out of date due to that ordinance being passed. So we are bringing the code up to date in accordance with that ordinance, uh, until that vote comes. Now, if the vote is, um, passed, then the code stays as we are amending it today. Uh, if this is, if this moves forward, then it would stay as amended. If it fails, then we would be going back to how it currently is right, which is conditionally. I know that sounds a little confusing, but.
Commissioner Wilcox, anything?
Oh, yeah, actually a few. Uh, thank you for the floor, Chair Savinson. Um. Um, we got a couple of different sections here. I don't know if you want to hear it all at once. Want me to take it point by point or?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Uh, my first thing was on the staff report, page three. The, uh, second and third paragraph, read a page, a measure fifty-six notice was mailed. And then paragraph three says, no mailed notice to property owners was provided. Is that what, um, Mr. Meyer was talking about where they didn't do it the first time around and now you had to do the, do it the second time around? Is that why it's coming back?
That is correct. Uh, the measure fifty-six notice is a require, a state requirement to let property owners know of a potential change in value or a potential code change that could affect the value of their property. Uh, when this was first brought to the planning commission and, uh, approved at the August second. Uh, a notice, because this was added late, was not sent to property owners. So that's why in order to come in, in conformance with both, uh, uh, DLCD and the measure fifty-six notice, we had to separate it out, re-notice it under its own case file and then bring it back. So if, if something were to come up later on, we'd know we've covered all the bases and we did notify all the property owners.
Okay, that's, there's that one. Uh, my next item is, um, where you're changing from conditional in the three different zones. Those also have an attached, uh, specific standards footnote. If they're not permitted, why would, I don't, I don't have that, I didn't have a chance to look up what that specific standard footnote refers to, but. It seems like if they're not permitted, there wouldn't be a specific, um, standard footnote. That's my point.
The footnote, uh, was decided that it will remain. We can, in case people want to go and, uh, look in that section for, uh, additional standards while marijuana. for additional standards while marijuana facilities are not permitted. I believe, I'll have to, I'll have to check the code. I believe in, in IP zones, so industrial park zones, marijuana warehouse facilities are conditionally permitted and it references this section. So we could potentially remove the placeholder. However, we wanted to leave it in there. We thought at this point, to leave it in there, that way, in case anybody wonders what are additional requirements, they can go there instead of, it just, we'll bring them additionally there, just bring them down there as a placeholder. We could go ahead and remove that. That is a requirement notifying that you are not able to have a marijuana facility within a thousand feet of another, of another marijuana facility, school, park or.
Commissioner Wilcox, it was something that legal suggested that we just leave in there?
Okay, my major point is, I heard Mr. Meyer say, well, number one, this ordinance eight eight two is technically temporary until the November twenty-four election. So if the voters don't uphold the ban, then you've essentially removed any allowance for marijuana retailers at all, because they've, it's been completely deleted from the code. So you'd essentially be starting from scratch. You wouldn't be returning to what's there now unless you chose to. And that would be totally optional. So the planning commission and council would be, you know, essentially recreating, revisiting where you were in two thousand fifteen after the voters approved measure ninety-one. So I don't see the point in taking something out entirely that might end up being put back in or, you know, revised or whatever.
Marijuana standards will remain in the code as it has been, you know, it's, it's legal within the states. We do have to have standards for marijuana in our code. We do not have to permit marijuana facilities within our city. So the code standards will remain within the code. We're not pulling all the marijuana standards out. All we're doing with this is changing that they're not permitted. And then we're coming in accordance with ordinance eight eight two, which banned them, which banned marijuana facilities. If the, when it was remanded to the vote in November, two thousand twenty-four. If that vote passes, then our code will not permit marijuana facilities in these three zones. But the marijuana standards will remain in effect. It does, just they, basically, if you're wanting to come to the city of Troutdale to have a marijuana facility, you will look, you can find standards, but if you look if it's permitted within any zones, you will see an N for no. So that's why we're not taking the whole stand, all the standards out and pulling out all the work that has already been done. We're basically changing a couple of letters. And also, if the vote fails and the citizens want marijuana facilities in the city, then we would just be going back and changing this from an N back to a C, how it currently is, if we were not to do this today. So the, we're doing this in order to come in accordance, because right now we're not in accordance with the proper ordinances with our city code. And then if that were to change, we'll change it again at that time.
Commissioner Limi?
You said within a thousand feet of parks. Is that, is that back in now?
Yes.
Because I thought that was one of the hangups that we had with Khalifa.
Yeah.
Was that, it was no longer there.
It is back here.
So, under the current code, with that back in, Khalifa could not use that facility that they were applying for. Is that right?
The problem is, at the time that Khalifa applied, it was not in the code. It was inadvertently omitted from our code.
Okay.
And so you can only go with what the code is at the time the application comes in.
Okay, yeah.
And a definition of marijuana facilities, isn't that, that's not retail? Does it includes retail?
Yes.
Processing, whatever?
No, those are processes.
That's a processing.
Okay, so we're just talking about retail?
We're talking about both. We're talking about processors and.
But then what's warehouse? Warehouses are permitted, right?
Uh, sorry, my computer died. Let me grab my, my charger really quick, so I didn't pull up the code section.
So marijuana processors are still conditionally approved in general industrial in the current. But this is.
But this affects both of them.
So it's any type of commercial marijuana activity? Is what we're talking about?
Facilities are commercial, yes.
So are processors?
Industrial.
A lot.
Processes are industrial.
Yeah, correct. Okay, so there's still a lot.
Right.
You just can't sell it.
Right.
You're stuck with it.
Yes.
Can't sell it or smoke it.
So does this impact any existing facilities that will have to be
No.
removed?
No.
No, and any existing facilities are grandfathered in. And I believe
We only have one.
There's only one.
Yeah.
And that, so they will be able to continue running and operating business because they were approved previous to this change.
As a monopoly in Troutdale.
No, nothing changes.
Nothing will change, but there will be no new.
Right.
Yeah. No one else can come in.
But initially, that was the only area that was supposed to be able to have it. That side of the freeway, too.
Correct.
Then that was hard.
You're right. Commissioner Wilcox, anything else?
Uh, yes. Mr. Minkoff actually raised the issue with Tetra. I'm curious if hypothetically, for some reason, they were able to, they lost their lease or whatever in their current location. Sounds like they would not be allowed to relocate within the city. Is that correct?
Correct. That would be correct.
Would another retailer be able to come into that space?
No, because it would be for existing.
Okay, so is that one?
If this were to move forward, that would be considered that property, so as of right now, that property is a legal nonconforming.
Right.
Because they're.
That business is legal not.
That being, that business with that, the occupancy that that building has is for that, that type of business.
So a new occupant comes.
So a new occupant could come in.
To that facility?
To that, to that location if they were to lose their lease. However, if someone were to come in and not want to, and they change the occupancy of that, a change of use, then they would not be able to go back
Okay.
to that. So, yeah, if they came in and then changed the use and then wanted to go back to a marijuana facility, they would not be able to do that because it's no longer permitted. Currently, there, if anybody's able to use a legal nonconforming use as the same structure, in the same structure, if that building is sold. For example, if you have a residential house that was converted to commercial use, say you have an office out of it, you buy it to run an office, you're able to do so even though it's legal nonconforming. You, if you were to use it as a house and then want to go back to an office, you would not be able to.
Right.
Because that is not permitted within the code.
So the fact that it's nonconforming, right? So they're approved for a nonconforming use.
They were conforming at the time. The code changed, making them legal nonconforming.
Right.
Yeah.
So they're nonconforming and then when someone reapplies, that, that use would be for Tetra.
No, it's the location. It's the building that's, that has the use. So somebody else
So Khalifa could.
Could, could move in and run a marijuana facility.
So Khalifa bought out Tetra?
Yeah.
It's not for the occupant, it's for the, the building.
It's the use of that structure.
Commissioner Wilcox?
I'm kind of listening for a decision on that. Is, Mr. Minkoff, right, is, it's assigned to the physical location, not the, the owner of the business?
So for example, in this situation, it would be, it was approved, it was an approved use. That location has that use allowed to it, correct? For example, say you were approved to have a storefront at a location. If you move out, that, that type of use, say it was, the storefront was a bed and breakfast or, I mean, a restaurant, you can operate a restaurant in that same space. If you come in and change it to then a storefront for textiles, the use changes in that location, even though they're both commercial. Similar, and then, that, that's a bad example, because both those would be permitted uses. But if there was a legal nonconforming use that was running a restaurant, they were approved previous to a code change. You could come in and run a restaurant in that same location. However, if you come in and change that use, then you cannot go back to what was not, no longer permitted.
Right, and I would say from other experiences, often, okay, you've got an approval for conditional use and you've got a business in there functioning under that conditional use, right? And when that business terminates, usually that use then terminates with that business.
I don't think so.
I'm trying to check the code. Bear with me for a second.
When I went down to the city of Portland to get the, to get a use permit, the use of this residence in the gateway area downtown Portland, it was the, it was the location that, they permitted the location to have a use of.
No, and I'm just saying, in my experience, is when the business closed, the conditional use went away. I'd reapply for new conditional use with the same purpose because it was not the same business that was functioning under that permit. Which would make it out.
Right.
Yeah. But you never know. Okay, that's a good question.
So here in section five point three two zero, discontinuance of nonconforming use of the Troutdale Development Code. Says, when a nonconforming user in any part thereof is discontinued for a period of at least twelve months, the nonconforming use or part thereof shall be considered terminated and therefore, use of the property upon which the use or part thereof was located shall conform to the regulations of the zoning district in which it is located. So in this situation, if the marijuana facility left and no one went into that space for twelve months, no other, no other marijuana, so if you go into that space for twelve months, correct, after, after twelve months. If one comes in after two or three months, they can still use the, the nonconformant. So that's how our code lifts out discontinuance of a nonconformant use.
So everybody's right?
Everybody's right.
Okay.
Exactly.
We all feel better now.
Everybody's right, in some capacity.
Yes.
So if I buy, if I move in where Tetra is for nine months and ran a restaurant or something out, and then I left, another marijuana place could come back in because it was less than twelve year, I mean, twelve months, right?
If it, so how this is written is if it's discontinued for a period of at least twelve months. So it can't, they say the space can't be in use for twelve months. If it's not being used for twelve months, then that use is, that nonconforming use is wiped away and it has that now, whatever use goes into that facility or that building, that structure has to be a legal conforming use.
So if you change the use, the conditional use is gone.
It's not automatic.
Period, okay.
Yeah, it's not automatic, yeah. So if you change the use to a restaurant, no one can come in there and do it because the use was changed to something that was permitted.
So I don't have to run a restaurant?
No.
Twelve months.
No, you just come in and, right, right, you.
You can run it for a week.
What are you planning?
You change the use and you are, that is the new use and that it can never go back to a nonconformant. What is it changed?
Like a partner with them to serve vegetables.
No, that's bad, okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Why would entertain a motion at this point? There's no other discussion.
This is Zach. I make a motion to, for the recommendation to city council for approval as amended.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for case file seven five dash one for marijuana facilities and, and psilocybin development code update as presented. Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Minkoff. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, here we go. Call the roll, please.
All right. Commissioner Minkoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen? Commissioner Limi?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett? Commissioner Savinson?
Yes, and that passes barely. All right. Thank you. Okay, you're up again. Actually, both of you are up now. Are you up?
Just a brief, okay, I don't have a presentation, just for a quick update from the, just an update, letting you know that seventy-five thirteen, the previous code amendment was approved at city council. And so now that will become effective as of the, I believe it's the seventeenth of this month. So that the code will be then updated.
Okay.
So that's, that's.
That's it? That's all you have?
I was focused on the other stuff, so.
Okay. Ms. Jones, did you have anything? All right, Commissioner Andrews?
I, I guess I just wanted to say it's nice to meet you both. I found out, I think tonight officially that David Bernicker wasn't.
I apologize. Is this the first time you've been here?
This is my first.
I'm so sorry. I've seen you so much. It's, I'm seeing you in my sleep.
Yeah, and I missed, I wasn't here in September. I was in Iceland. But I wanted to just say it's really nice to meet you guys and I'm happy you're here and looking forward to getting to know you guys a little bit better and I guess I got a lot of work cut out for you, but if there's anything we can do to keep, you know, partnering together to make things better, that's what we're here for, so appreciate it.
Commissioner Limi?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Not any, thing else?
Commissioner Wilcox?
Nope, nothing else.
Okay. So I'm going to go backwards and this is after the fact, but so David Bernicker resigned as community development director and Heather Jones, who is in chambers tonight, is the acting community development director. And so she's here. She's actually been in front of us multiple times before. So that's a familiar face to you guys. And Dakota Meyer. And Dakota Meyer, um, you could tell us a little bit about yourself.
Uh, so, I'm Dakota Meyer, uh, I am the associate planner here with the city. Uh, I came from the city of Hillsborough, where I worked as a planning technician, um, doing a mixture of technical work as well as planning work for about four, a little over four years. Uh, previous to that, I worked, uh, as an intern with the city of Scaphus, uh, of which where I'm born and raised. So I'm a local boy, uh, the small town thing I get, I understand, being from a small town, um, and I still, my family still lives out there, so, uh, it's been a pleasure, uh, being here. I've been here for almost two months, uh, feels like a lot longer, which is great, means you kind of fit right in and started getting to work, so, uh, I was hired at the same time as the assistant planner, who you'll eventually be meeting whenever he has something also. Uh, I will be the staff liaison, uh, for planning commission, uh, but he will, or might become his name is Nick, so you will meet him, uh, at another date when he has something to bring to you for.
I'll just say this, Dakota and Nick are killing it up there on the hill. And, um, it's a pleasure to, to work with you so far, and you've been at council pitching all sorts of stuff. Um, he's been a, a regular face there, and I, I think you're doing a tremendous job. And so are you, Heather. It's really difficult to kind of come in and try to piece things back together and figure out what's going on and have to work with groups like this. I just wonder, did you draw the short straw to get planning commission? Is that kind of how that worked up there or what?
Not at all, not at all. Uh, I, um, as the associate planner, uh, I thought that was something I should be the liaison for, so, I chose this.
Well, I think, I think we are blessed to have you.
You crossed the bed, yeah.
You're, uh, you're doing a great job and, and we appreciate it. And I know that, um, Heather's got plenty to do and would rather not have this job long, and I think we're working with Jensen to, um, we're doing a search to fill that vacancy, you know, as quickly and as effectively as we can. Be good, but, um, yeah, it's been a little, what do you say? Difficult?
Difficult.
Yeah, challenging?
We like challenges.
Educational, all sorts of great things. But we're getting there.
We're hoping to have somebody chosen by the end of the year.
Pardon me?
We're hoping to have somebody chosen by the end of the year.
Well, thank you. I know it's a lot of extra hard work and we, we do appreciate it. Doesn't look like it all the time, but we do appreciate you guys. Great, but, but thank you. And I also want to thank, uh, Council White for being here this evening and Council Glanz for being online. And do you have anything to say, or are you gonna get into trouble for talking again?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm great. Thanks for the good, uh, good info, it's always entertaining.
It is, isn't it? You know, you can always come home. If you're not aware, this is her roots.
Uh-huh.
No comment there.
It's on the list.
You don't miss us yet.
I do miss you totally. Lots of spots all over that.
All right, well, thank you for being here, and, um, I just want to say, uh, thank you, everyone. And, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening.
I saw move.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion to second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
I love the Barbie truck next to your house.
The what?
The Barbie truck?
Is that the ugliest thing ever?
What?
Is that the ugliest thing ever?
I know.
Where is it?
Barbie Road Highway.
My next door neighbor's a couple twinkies short of the Happy Meal.
Where is it?
Where?